On our agenda items. And I'd like to recognize first Chilton Blunt to speak for topics twelve through sixteen.
Good evening, Mayor, council members.
Good evening.
My name is Chilton. I'm the cemetery director over at Graceland-Belwood Cemetery. I recently was appointed that position in July of last year. I took that position. They had already established a veteran committee. However, that committee had members that were appointed in nineteen ninety-seven. And so that that committee hadn't been active since nineteen ninety-seven. So I got with the mayor's office and we decided that we wanted to pursue that. So we got five awesome veterans that are agenda items twelve through sixteen. Mister Dr. Clans Holman, Miss Alita Bowler, Mister Jimmy Stocker, Mister Kenneth Cole, Mister Fred Woods. I've met with each and every one of those individuals. They are awesome. I'm excited about where the cemetery is going. I told the Public Health and Welfare Committee, the cemetery is doing like the Jeffersons. We're moving on up. And so we are excited and I hope that you are excited as well that the cemetery is moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions? Councilman Lockit.
Yes, sir. Mister Blunt, what will these members be doing?
So the veteran section of our cemetery, there are some stipulations that are currently set in place for those veterans. Of course, you have to have honorable discharge from the military. There's some other things that are in place that, in my opinion, are kind of overrated. So hopefully this committee will be able to take those rules and regulations and kind of simplify them so that we can accommodate all of our veterans that are honorably discharged from military services.
Any further questions? I would just like to thank you for bringing us up to date from a time when I was twenty-eight.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. And next we will recognize Mister Homer Jackson. He will speak for topic number seven.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Like I said, my name is Homer Jackson and we have here tonight support Bruno Bell, Michael Davis,
Grant Williams,
Andrew Carl.
We are here to briefly talk about the needs and accomplishments of the group values intervention. We work under leadership of Reverend Crumpton as parole officer. All of us are retired and we are volunteering our time to GBI program. First, we would like to thank Judge Brown and Reverend Crumpton for giving us the opportunity to be a part of this outstanding program and trusting us to respect the GBI program in the most positive way. We are brother keeper. We understand constructive criticism. We understand what it means to have good character, good reputation, and we realize that when we are out in the school or just in the public, or just in the public, we are representing God, ourselves, Judge Brown, Reverend Crumpton, the mayor, in quite natural Pine Bluff. We understand that kids are watching us also. Reverend Crumpton personally escorted us to all the schools that we were visiting and he made sure we had the right contact in this area. When we visit school, we talk to the students one-on-one sometimes, as a collective group sometimes. We reward students for different reasons. We have gift cards. We pay to get some student haircut. We help with school supplies. We teach them how to perform during the interviews for jobs. We talk to them about the parents, how important it is to always look your best. We pay these things out of our pocket, donation from friends, donation from group that is called a helping hand for the community, which we are part of that group also. We also tell them that we love them. We tell them that they are not bad. They just make bad choices. We are making a difference in this environment life. Reverend Crumpton always check on us, even though he's quite busy. This is not a job for Reverend Crumpton. It's a calling. It is a calling. Reverend Crumpton loves these kids and they love him. They're always asking us about him. He is constantly out there talking to them, doing things to help them. He talks to them to let them know where they are and where they might end up if they don't change their ways. He engage with the parents when the opportunity presents itself. He engage parents so that it's important these days to be involved with the parents. He fight for the kids, especially those that seem to be lost, headed in the wrong direction. Lastly, Reverend Crumpton is making a big difference in these kids' life. We are not just saying this. We have personally seen this time often and often again how he helped these kids. With all these things that he's doing, we have never heard him complain. Reverend Crumpton is making a big difference with these kids. Just think about how important it could be a difference if he had help. We want to thank everyone for allowing us to speak in this support of the GBI program.
Thank you. And before you take your seat, do we have any questions on the council? Well, thank you so much for your service and thank you for your remarks tonight.
Thank you.
We can't hear. I've been texting them in the chat and letting them know we can't hear.
I can hear you. I can hear you, though.
Public comments and everything else, too.
Councilwoman Frazier, can you hear us? Okay, can you mute her and maybe someone text her and let her know that we can hear her?
She, she, they realize that we can hear, they can hear us. It got to be on their volume, on their side that they have to increase their volume because I have it up to the max.
Can you text her? Thank you so much. All right. And next we'll recognize Mister Julius Lever, who is going to speak on topic number eight.
Good evening, City Council and fellow residents. I'm delighted to see you all here today. And I'm speaking on number eight when it comes down to the street department and a forensic audit. Very quickly, I just want to say, from my understanding, a forensic audit of a municipality is a detailed examination of its finances to uncover fraud or other irregularities. Forensic audits can also be used to improve internal controls and prevent future fraud. And I noticed also that Camden, Arkansas, at this time is having an audit. And as of February twelfth, the Shelby County, which is Memphis, commissioned Monday voted to approve a financial audit of Memphis Shelby School District. It goes on to say that the forensic audit will be instrumental in his efforts to propose state intervention in the district. Not sure how long the audit would take, but for a long time, we don't know exactly the budget issues are and how the money is being spent, so that will be very helpful. I'm not going to say much more than that as I could, but I want to say that I want to read something to you quickly and you all might be familiar with, or you might not. It says, "Everybody's smart enough to know that we've been slighted and we want ours." I don't mean by our forty acres of the mule because we passed that, but we need help. I mean for us to be on our own two feet, us meaning youths, or us meaning black people, whatever you want to take it for us to be on our own two feet, we need help. We have been here. We have been a good friend. If you want to make it a relationship type thing, we have been there. And now we deserve our payback. It's like you got a good friend that don't ever look back out for you. You know, you now dressed up in jewels. America got jewels. They got paid and everything, lending money to everybody except us, almost. And it's like.
There you go. I can hear you now. I can hear somebody. Oh, that's on.
Okay, can you hold on just a second? Can you hear us? Can you hear us? Okay, I'm sorry.
And thank you for being patient. And since it's not too much, I hope you don't mind. And it's like everybody needs a little help on their way to being, you know, self-reliant. You know what I'm saying? That's the whole thing of, it's all about the album. No independent person just grew up and was born independent. You work and you learn teamwork. You learn cooperation.
I can hear you, old man Mays. I just can't hear anybody that's on city.
And unity and struggle, and then you became independent. We have to teach that and instill that. Why is it that they want to do that? I mean, if this is truly a melting pot, a country where we care about Lady Liberty, got her hand out like this, she really loves us, then we need to be like that. It may be, it needs to be the black kids, and if there is a white person who's gotten money, then he needs to help them. He needs to help black kids, Mexican kids, Korean kids, whatever, but they need to be real and they need to be before, before we all die. And then you say, "I made a mistake." We should have given them some money. We really should have helped these folks. It's going to be too late. You know what I'm saying, almost true. Then that, then that's when you got to pay your own karma. And that's where God makes you punish you, punish when, when God punishes you, because I feel like there's too much money here. I mean, nobody should be hit the lotto for thirty-six million and we got people starving in the streets. This, that is not idealistic. That's just real.
Yes, please be patient.
There is no way Michael Jackson should have, or whoever Jackson, should have a million thousand triple billion dollars and then there's people starving. There is no way, there is no way that these people should own planes and there are people that don't have houses, apartments, shacks, drawers, and pants. Certain people will say, "Well, then they earned it." Now you go out and you earn it for yourself. If they earned it, I think that's good. I think they deserve it. But if you, if you've earned it, you owe. Because look at me. I don't have that mega money, but I feel guilty walking by somebody. I got to give them some money.
Mister Lever.
Yes. Okay, now, oh, say this way. Those words by a young man that was twenty-two years old, it wasn't very eloquent in his choice of words or language, but as a twenty-two-year-old Tupac Shakur talking about the United States and how he's so disappointed that we don't seem, that we don't seem to love each other. Okay, so what I'm saying is a forensic audit for the street department could be a good thing, but it's certainly good for the entire city of Pine Bluff during a forensic audit. I noticed two things, more than that, but two I would have mentioned. Vivian Flowers came from the state and I listened to some legislation of the, today about the legislative audit that was done when they discovered six hundred thousand missing and they discovered six hundred thousand dollars was spent on golf carts that never should have been spent and how Mayor Washington was there to state the city's case. So I'm aware of that.
Mister Lever, I'm so sorry to interrupt. You've gone way, way over three minutes.
Okay, I will say this. I'll say this.
Yes.
Crime is very important to tackle, but so many people, like Tupac Shakur and so many other youths, feel that governments are taking the money for themselves and not using it for the people. And because of that, so many of the young people are very dissatisfied. So I'm just suggesting a legislative, a, 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 for the city of Pine Bluff, but not just for the street department, for the entire city.
Yes, sir. And while we try to deal with this technical difficulty, and thank you very much for your remarks, I'll go ahead and clarify that we are moving toward getting the forensic audit for the whole city done. I, I just saw this in the agenda when it was already placed on the agenda and I plan to work with Councilman Mays to expand this resolution to include across the board forensic audit for the city's finances. And just so you know, what needs to come before that is a request for proposal or request for qualifications so that we can identify some qualified firms and also get a sense of what the cost would be. And we have identified some language to draw from. And when our finance director returns next week, we will be drafting the RFP or the RFQ to advertise. So that is where we're moving from in the mayor's office. And as you can see, the city council is looking to move forward as well. So thank you very much for your remarks.
Just to follow this, this is better. What my concern.
Mister Lever.
Yes.
We are like way past and we have a long agenda and the weather's bad, so just give us.
If you spend the money on this one and then they say, "We don't have the money for the next one."
Well, but we're, we're, what I'm telling you is we're going to get one.
I got you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order and we will ask. Are we recording? Okay, we are recording. And if I could ask Pastor Eric Waddell to join us, pastor of New Morning Star, to deliver the invocation.
Let's bow our heads for a word of prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this day. Lord, we thank you, Lord, for a fresh grace, fresh mercy, and fresh love. And Lord, we, although it's cold outside, we thank you, Lord, for being here. We pray, Lord, that you will be done in this meeting tonight. We pray, Lord, that you bless our leadership that's here before us to continue to improve and grow the city of Pine Bluff. Lord, we just thank you for all that you've done and all that you're going to do in your son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Budget allegiance to the fact of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Mays?
Here.
Council, Councilmember Holcomb?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Lockit?
Here.
Councilmember Frazier?
Here.
Councilmember Brunson?
Here.
Councilmember Denton?
Here.
Councilmember Fells?
Here.
Eight present.
We have eight members present and I will recognize a motion to approve the minutes from February third, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those who vote for the approval of the minutes indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion passed. And now we will begin with the committee reporting and I will recognize Councilman Brown for Ways and Needs.
Thank you, Mayor. Ways and Needs met just before this council meeting. We did not have any business or budget adjustment for Ways and Means, so that meeting was immediately adjourned and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. And next we have ordinances and resolutions. We'll recognize Councilman Holcomb.
Thank you, Mayor. We have sixteen agenda items. Number one, two, number one and two are for the third and final, third and final reading. Number three and four are up for the second reading. Number five and six are for the first reading. Seven through sixteen are all resolutions which should be completed on tonight. Number twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen are all resolutions for the Veterans Internment Committee and they will all be combined and read at the same time. And that concludes ordinance and resolution. There's no further discussion.
Thank you, Councilman Holcomb. And next we have Economic and Community Development. I'll recognize Councilmember Frazier. Councilwoman Frazier, are you, can you hear us?
Yes, I'm here. And first I want to apologize because I kept getting a pop-up thing saying to unmute, so that's why I was unmuting, not because I was trying to unmute, but because I was told to unmute. Thank you, Mayor. Let me just breathe a little bit here. Our community development, Economic and Community Development people met on February thirteenth at eleven a.m. I want to first say thank you to Mister Larry Matthews, who allowed me to tag along and ride along with him to go see the different project sites. And I can say that I am very excited about the upcoming things for our city and I can't wait for everything to come to fruition. The community service updates is as follows. Twenty twenty-five continuum of care program grant announcement. HUD announced that the city will receive a hundred and ninety-six thousand eight hundred and twelve dollar grant for housing assistance for homeless persons with disabilities. This is the same funding that the city receives as a renewal grant each year. HUD announced also that the city will receive a new planning grant for fifty-six thousand three hundred and ninety dollars to build capacity to address homelessness within a fifteen-county area of southeast Arkansas. So we're excited about those things that's, that's happening. And then proposed the Paul Contract ECD plans to contribute, contribute emergency funds for warming center operations at Opportunity House. The committee agreed to table the two hundred thousand dollar amendment under corrections, which were made at the meeting because there were some questions and some concerns and some corrections to make everything in the ordinance align up with the contract so we won't be having two different legal documents. Everything will be in sync. Economic development update in regards to the retail consultant, retail strategies. Retail Strategies has been working very diligently and have been keeping in touch with Ms. Lori in reference to what they're doing in securing additional retailers for Pine Bluff, Arkansas. So we're excited about that. They are on track with their contract deliverables and we have made sure that whatever reports and stuff that they give to Lori that we make sure that it gets to the clerk so that it could be on record in her office. Delta Rhythm and Bayou Cultural District Update Project is approximately two-thirds complete, barren, weather delays. The project should be completed in approximately sixteen weeks. Housing and Public Works Updates, Emergency Rehabilitation Program Updates. During twenty twenty-four, the application portal received over three hundred registrants and priority consideration was given to seniors and disabled persons making less than thirty percent of area median income. We have reviewed approximately a hundred and twenty pre-applications that indicated they were making less than thirty percent. Ones that owned their property and had a qualifying emergency condition were invited to submit a full application. There are some that did not submit full applications, others that exceeded thirty percent, even though they said they were under thirty percent, exceeded thirty percent and did not move forward in the process. However, there are fourteen cases that are completed and underway at the time of our meeting. Last but not least, Public Works Projects Updates, Grant Announcement. We will be receiving, Grant Announcement, two thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight thousand TAP grant, Main Street Pedestrian Railroad Crossing to connect Phase One Streetscape to Phase Two. And Streetscape Phase Two work is continuing, which of course there are some delays because of weather. Authorization to sign the Grant Street contract is on, till this for today, so we're excited about that. And then the University Drive and MLK Football Soccer Field projects have landscaping components that are waiting on weather clearance. And so we have a lot of things going and a lot of things moving. And so that is my report for today, Mayor. Thank you so much and I appreciate y'all.
Thank you. We will next hear from Councilmember Denton, Chair of Public Health and Welfare Committee.
Yes, Mayor. Good evening. To piggyback off Mister Blunt, we met with the Veterans Cemetery Committee and also they are going to do a Remembrance Day on March the twentieth and that is to honor those families that they served in twenty twenty-four. And they're going to do a special event and that will name the individuals and they will present their families with a memorial keepsake and they're going to have a small memorial and they're going to do a flag raising ceremony as well. And that way they're going to retire, the old one, the current one that they have. Also Transit was available. They did receive a new van, a twenty twenty-four Transit van with the lift and they are making preparation to do Transportation Day, which is the national day, is March the eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. And they're going to have something planned for each, well, for the employees each day of the week. They are going to reach out to seat southeast Arkansas Transit to honor their team as well. And this year marks fifty years since Pine Bluff Transit has been a part of the city. And they said that the staff is working with Mister Proctor to make a development plan. And also it was established by Wiley Jones, a former slave who became a wealthy entrepreneur here in Pine Bluff. And that is my report.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have a question. It's from Councilmember Frazier's report.
Yes.
And so I know she mentioned about the retail consultant and then that was one thing. I was wondering with Ms. Ms. Lori Walker, would she be coming in to give the council a report? Or, because I'm kind of curious about where we are with that. And then also that pedestrian crossing, is that included in the Streetscape? Or is that another project that we're funding from another source?
Can we, Councilwoman Frazier?
I don't know if Lori is going to give an independent report, but I'm sure that she can give a report to the full council if we.
Actually, let me stop you. Mister Matthews is here and he might be able to answer. Thank you so much.
How do new mayor, city council. Yes, she will be submitting a written report on the progress from the strategy team that's in place. I know they have one interested person that didn't want to be revealed as of yet, that's looking at coming. We will make sure that the report gets to the council at the next meeting. And the railroad crossing grant is separate from the Streetscape because the railroad will be actually doing their work on their own property. We received the grant from the Highway Department to go towards that cost that they will incur. But in return, we are getting the crossing, the brand-new crossing that drops down with all the bells and whistles that go with the new crossing. They are donating that to the city, but they got a lot of work to do at that intersection, which the grant will cover eighty percent of.
Okay.
Any further questions? For anyone who's reported so far. Okay. Next we will hear from Councilmember Fells, Chair of Development and Planning.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Development and Planning met on February the seventh and our main agenda item was the ordinance that's on our agenda for tonight. It's item number five. And the committee voted to pass that to the full council to do pass recommendation and we'll be announcing our next meeting date soon. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes. Question?
Yes.
Sure, council member.
You skipped my committee.
Did I? Oh, I'm sorry. I was checking up. I'm sorry. Next, we will hear from Councilmember Lockit with Public, Chair of Public Works. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Public Works Committee met on February the eleventh at one o'clock by Zoom only to put forth.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
Okay, we met on February eleventh at one o'clock to entertain and vet item number eleven. Eleven, a resolution authorizing a contract with nine eleven Construction Company Incorporated for work on the Grant Street Multitrail Project in the amount of four hundred and twenty-six thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-four cents. We move that to the council with a due pass. That concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much and I do apologize for skipping you. Next we will hear from Councilmember Brunson, Chair of Traffic and Aviation.
Hello, Mayor. Traffic and Aviation met actually today in the old city council chambers. Hold on one second. I'm sorry.
Sure.
I'm a loud child. Hold on one second. Okay. We met today at eleven thirty a.m. and one of the things that was on the agenda was we had ordinance that was submitted by Councilmember Mays in reference to drag racing in the city. We did think it was a great ordinance to have and we had wanted to make a couple of amendments to that when around the fine. It had, I think it might have been an era where it stated after the first fine, you'll be charged a thousand dollars. Well, after the second, I think it said first fine, but it should have been after the second fine, you'll be charged a thousand dollars. Wanted to make sure we made that amendment before we submitted it to the full council. So we're going to send. So, we're gonna, um, send those suggested changes back to, um, Attorney Childers, um, to make those adjustments, and then we will send it back to the full council, um, with a due pass. We also discussed, um, a citizen had, um, a request to put, uh, a speeding, uh, twenty-five mile per hour speeding sign off of Sheffield Avenue. And Councilmember Fells brought that to the committee, and Mr. Reynolds has already reviewed the area as well. So, we voted to bring that to the council with a due pass as well to get with the Street Department, um, to have them to put the twenty-five mile, um, sign in that neighborhood. The other thing that we discussed, um, we had reports from Brighter Field Airport. Um, Mr. Doug Hill was on. Um, everything is going well. They're preparing, um, for the weather for the airport. Um, Mr. Ken Johnson was on just, um, from a support standpoint. He didn't have an official report. Um, but, and also, our Street Department Director, Mr. Tiger Dockett, was present, and he talked about what the plans were for, um, the weather that's coming in the city and what they plan on doing as far as, um, softening the roads and being, having his staff prepare as well. Um, he did talk about, um, personnel needs, and we did let him know that he needed to get with you and Gina, our Finance Director, to kind of discuss what that looks like for his area. But other than that, that was all that, um, we had in our report. Um, Councilmember Frazier, did I miss anything? Because you was in the meeting, and I don't have my notes directly from me. So, that's, that's everything that we hit on. Okay. All right. And that concludes my report, Mayor.
Mayor.
Thank you so much, and I believe we have a question from Councilmember Brown.
Uh, the legislation concerning the drag racing, so is that something that we don't have on the books already, or is that something we're kind of improving or changing? An ordinance is already in place?
Um, now, there, I got it. This was my first time getting it at the meeting, so I had reviewed it yet, so I'm not sure if it's, um, Councilmember Mays brought the legislation, so he might have a little bit more insight on, on that.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll wait till we get something in hand then.
Okay. You should get it, um, via email once we get it back from Joe, but, um, we just got it today.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, any further questions from council members? Okay. And, uh, next, we have Councilmember Holcomb, Chair of Administration.
Thank you, Mayor. The Administration Committee has not met since our last council meeting. We'll meet, uh, next Tuesday, not next, next, not next Tuesday, but March the fourth at four P.M.
Thank you so much. And finally, um, Councilmember Brown, who is Chair of Public Safety.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Public Safety met on the fifth of February. Um, Animal Control was not present. I actually ran into him on the way to the Public Safety meeting. He was out in the field, uh, chasing after a, a loose, uh, pet. And so, uh, we heard from the Fire Department, they gave out the monthly report. That was passed out at the first council meeting. Um, Chief Howell stated that he has ninety-two positions, uh, budgeted, eighty-nine are filled at this point. Um, he recently had, uh, twenty-nine individuals take the written test, uh, for the firefighter, um, positions. Um, twelve passed that physical, I'm sorry, that written test. Those individuals will move on to the physical agility test, and then from that, um, once they pass that test, they will go on to a background check. And so, that's kind of the process of becoming a firefighter. Uh, written test, physical agility, and then after that, background checks. Um, Chief Howell also mentioned that, uh, we had a firefighter who has been with the department for thirty-five years, Juan Ventris. So, if you know Juan, uh, tell him thank you for his service to the city. He has thirty-five years with, uh, uh, the Fire Department. I think that is the longest serving that we have currently on staff. Um, I also mentioned that the training, uh, for new firefighters takes place, uh, all of it takes place in the first twelve months, and we are now doing in-house EMT training, uh, which, uh, Chief Howell states that's been very effective, um, because at one point we were, uh, kind of depending on Camden to do our EMT training. And so, by us doing it in-house, we're able to, um, enforce and enrich areas that it were, uh, people having difficulties in when they were away from, from our own station. Uh, we have five members currently in the academy down in Camden. Um, at that point, on the fifth, they had about five weeks left. They're set to graduate in mid-March. Uh, Chief Howell also stated that, um, he had some, it's not a major concern at the moment, but, uh, as far as his, uh, repair and maintenance line item, he has a truck that's currently in the shop, has fifty-two thousand dollars worth of repairs, and he has a, another truck basically that's going to have that same, that's having that same issue, and currently has a hundred thousand dollars in his budget. So, he may be in the near future seeking a budget adjustment to cover, uh, any future repairs that he may have for, uh, vehicles that are, that require that type of service. Um, and he also mentioned the fact that, um, the length of time to order and receive a fire truck now is roughly thirty-six months. Um, and so, we ordered a truck today, it would be twenty twenty-eight before we receive it. Right? So, um, so he said that, you know, just be mindful of that. We have right now a couple of trucks that are at that point where they're needing replacement. And so, he just, you know, he didn't necessarily ask us to order two, but he, uh, said that we probably need to look into getting two. Okay? Currently, um, the, uh, cost for a fire engine is about a million dollars, and that was in December of twenty, um, December of twenty-four. That's what the price was then. So, um, so it's something for the council to think about. Uh, typically, these fire trucks last fifteen to twenty years. Um, and, you know, that's the rough amount of time that they last. Uh, let's see. And also, we have discussed about putting a plan in place to possibly order a truck over the next ten years. It's just talk. We haven't made any type of, uh, direct plans, but, you know, we tried to order a truck every year for the next ten years, and that'd probably keep our fleet, um, afloat there. Um, he also mentioned that there is a new expense that, um, comes from individuals that we have at the Fire Academy. Um, I guess they've changed their food service, and so now we're having to cover the meals for the, uh, people that are at the academy. He did not have that in his budget because that was not a fee, um, a charge that he had from last year. So, it's going to be roughly about, um, ten thousand dollars at this point. We have five individuals in the Fire Academy now. It's roughly two thousand dollars per person. And so, um, that budget adjustment may be coming a little bit sooner. Uh, we heard from the Police Department, um, Chief, Deputy Chief Warrior, um, with GBI stated that, you know, they're currently looking at, she said, two hundred and seven candidates. And I asked her what candidates were, she said candidates were individuals associated with gun violence. And so, currently, um, GBI is looking at two hundred and seven different individuals who are associated with gun violence, not necessarily that they've done anything, but they've been around individuals that may have. Um, and so, and it, an example she gave that, that we had a shooting rec- recently on Second. Um, GBI has worked, uh, reached out to the families, um, of the, uh, victims to give them any assistance that they may need there. Uh, we heard from Lieutenant Thompson about the crime stats, and I'll just, um, give you the overall rundown. Crime rate is down six percent. Um, and also, I believe it was Chief Richardson who mentioned a police cadet program. Um, this program is going to be for individuals eighteen to twenty-one years old. Um, and basically, this gives those individuals a chance to work in a police environment while they're still not, um, able to become certified officers. They can receive a lot of the, uh, training that they can get, uh, that they can receive, uh, by working in the office, taking reports and things like that. Uh, she wants to start off between five and eight candidates, and, um, for funding, we're going to try to use those unused salary slots within the Police Department. And that is all I have. That concludes my report. Other, uh, also, our next meeting will be March fifth, uh, one thirty P.M. in the old council chambers. That is the, uh, Wednesday after our, um, March council meeting, the first council meeting in March. So, one thirty, Wednesday, March fifth. And that concludes my report. Sorry if I was too long.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Brown. Any questions from other council members? Thank you. And now, we will, um, hear from, uh, Chair Holcomb, who will lead us into our, um, proposed ordinances and resolutions section.
Agenda item number one, an ordinance amending chapter sixteen of the Code of Ordinance, Ordinance of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas to add new article eight regarding smoke shops and vape shops from doing business in certain locations within the city and for related purposes up for the third and final reading.
An ordinance amending chapter sixteen of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas to add new article eight regarding smoke shops and vape shops from doing business in certain locations within the city and for related purposes.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those, uh, oh, it's, it's been moved and seconded, discussion?
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
So, I just, well, I quickly wanted to, um, say one quick thing about this ordinance. Sponsoring this basically because, uh, we recognize as a city that, you know, people have a right to use, you know, products like this. Um, I think just the problem that we're seeing in Pine Bluff is the overabundance of some of these products. Uh, for example, if you look at a street like Twenty-Eighth, there are now, um, can you hear me now? So, if you look at a street like Twenty-Eighth, there are now two smoke shops, and I just think if we don't get a handle on it, this is something that's likely to, um, proliferate, especially in a community like, um, Pine Bluff. And, you know, research shows that oversaturation comes with different health issues, um, safety issues. And so, this is kind of in line with what a lot of municipalities are adopting all around the country, just that prohibition around schools, places of worship. And this is actually a direct replica of what they're doing in North Little Rock. Uh, and, um, it's just going to help the city be more proactive in limiting where these places can set up shop. And I did also want to mention that, um, I believe Councilmembers Denton and Frazier wanted to be added as sponsors and, um, co-sponsors, and, um, it's welcome to any of the other council members.
You can, you can add me.
You heard that, Madam Clerk? Okay.
Add me on, smile.
And Brown as well.
Add me to that, too.
And Lockett also, raise your hand. Councilman Lockett?
Show everybody.
It's time. I have all of it. Councilman Mays?
Yes. Uh, hey, good evening, everybody. Sorry I couldn't be there. We need to make sure that, you know, that's, I don't particularly smoke, but you, that's a growing business, and, because I don't want to just stop our business in Pine Bluff. People have a vision. So, we've got to be careful how we stop things. We have to be careful.
Thank you so much, uh, Councilman Mays. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. We can always open it back up if we have to. Uh, the people, they've been telling me, we, you never know, if somebody, if my, our vision, uh, won, they're likely to say, look, you back when you wanted, and stole, and add to their product, or something like that. A lot of things are over. Stop. A lot of things just don't, not make any sense, but I, I, I support it. But if you leave it open, if you will, you take it out, and you start again, it helps a lot along the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Mays. Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded, all those vote, uh, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes.
Agenda item number two, an ordinance amending article three and chapter sixteen of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine, Pine Bluff, Arkansas, respecting abandoned wreck, dismantled, or inoperable motor vehicle vehicles and for related purposes up for the third and final reading.
An ordinance amending article three and chapter sixteen of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, respecting abandoned wreck, dismantled, or inoperable motor vehicles and for related purposes.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
Uh, Madam Mayor, also sponsoring this one, I think it's important for the residents to know, the goal of this ordinance is not to be, um, punitive. We're not just trying to tow people's vehicles away. But basically, in regards to those vehicles that are located in the right-of-way or on a vacant property, we're just giving code enforcement a bit more authority to actually, you know, get those vehicles removed. In order to do that, they will have to, you know, make every effort to contact the property owner, give them, you know, that seventy-two day period or twenty-four hours, depending on where it's located. And then, if, you know, no progress has been made, then they'll have some more authority to tow that away. So, we're just trying to do what we need to do to, you know, clean up our city. And I believe Denton and Frazier wanted to be added on this one, correct? Okay, and it's welcome to any other.
I can do. Can you add me, uh, Councilmember Fells, uh, City of Pine Bluff?
Yes, thank you.
So, um, Councilmember, right now, so, I guess they, I guess my thing is that before this, they weren't able to enforce a vehicle on a?
So, actually, if you look at the, uh, current ordinance, I wish Lockett was here, but, um, for example, if it's in the right-of-way, I mean, if it's like on the street right now, I believe the way the ordinance is reading is that the police off, the Police Department can remove it, or like the mayor, or the mayor is designated. And so, this just kind of cleans up that language and gives code enforcement, you know, more undisputed, um, authority to remove the vehicles. And then, of course, you know, we don't want to tie up our police officers with issues like this. And then, I believe right now, we don't have anything on the books addressing like vacant property. Um, so.
A house without, um.
Yeah, a house without a, yeah, a property without a house, or a property with a vacant house or things like that. So, just giving them some more authority to tackle things like that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yes, I got some absolutely.
Councilman Mays?
Yes, thank you, thank you, dear. You know, this, this is good legislation. You have people just parking cars in the yard. I mean, you got fifteen cars, free hoods, uh, tire gone, and, and this is something that should have been passed a while back. Every time we brought it up, they, they went against it and kept on parking it because you got friends, nephews, leasing. They're not mechanics, they're just holding the arch in front of the house. If they did it, deeply, covered it up, it'd look a lot better, but they just, they tire it off, roll it in front of the house, down the street. We got to do a better job of policing this to what we passed it. I'm, I'm for it because I see a lot of cars in my yard, in my ward. And I would want Bruce, that people just hit the tires off and put them in the yard. It's not the way to do it, Ben. But if we're going to pass it, follow up on it. You know, we got to make an effort when they, when they pass things, not just pass it and let it go. I'm all for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Mays. Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded, all those indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes.
Agenda item number three, an ordinance requiring that legislation appropriating funds specify the funding source in the body of the legislation amending section two dash fifty-four in chapter two, article two, division two of the Code of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, and for later, for related purposes up for the second reading.
An ordinance requiring that legislation appropriating funds to specify the funding source in the body of the legislation, amending section two dash fifty-four in chapter two, article two, division two of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, and for related purposes.
Place it on the calendar. Agenda item number four, an ordinance prescribing the means for adjustments, amendments, or other changes to the municipal budget, amending section two dash one forty-four in chapter two, article five, division one of the Code of Ordinances in the City, of the City of Pine Bluff, of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, and for related purposes up for the second reading.
An order, an ordinance prescribing the means for adjustments, amendments, and other changes to the municipal budget, amending section two dash one forty-four in chapter two, article five, division one of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, and for related purposes.
Place it on the calendar. Agenda item number five, an ordinance adopting the updated City of Pine Bluff Stormwater Management Plan covering years twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-nine and for related purposes up for the first reading.
Whereas federal and state laws and regulations require that the city have in place a stormwater management plan to combat water pollution. And whereas the city enacted the Stormwater Management Plan in ordinance number sixty-one ninety-one passed in August twenty-first, twenty-two thousand and six, in compliance with the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Phase Two permit process. And whereas it is time to update the city's plan and renew the permit, and the attached seventeen-page revised plan should be adopted to comply with current law and regulations to ensure the city retains its permit. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one, that the attached City of Pine Bluff Stormwater Management Plan consisting of seventeen pages with reference to permit, permit number.
of seventeen pages with reference to permit, permit number AR zero four zero zero four two, and covering the years twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-nine, is incorporated by reference herein as if fully set forth. The plan is hereby approved and adopted as presented. Section two, that the new plan shall administer and regulate the matters set forth therein. In the event of a conflict with the old plan, the new plan shall govern. Section three, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are repealed to the extent of the conflict. Section four, all sections, paragraphs, sentences, and phrases of this ordinance are declared So, section one, there is added to the Pine Bluff Police Department the positions of group violence intervention case manager and credible manager, messenger, uh, consistent with the attached job descriptions. Section two, the job descriptions and proposed annual salaries between thirty thousand to fifty thousand for the new position plus benefits shall be submitted to the Administration Committee for review and recommendation to the council. Section three, the twenty twenty-five budget, city budget is hereby amended pro rata to add the wages and benefits for the positions of group violence intervention case manager and credible messenger in police, in the Police Department budget, in the amount of one hundred twenty-seven thousand five hundred three dollars for the positions. The Police Department shall take into account said positions when preparing its budget each year thereafter. The source of funding for the positions shall be reallocated from the police budget by converting three uniform positions into three non-uniform positions, adding one credible manager position and two case manager positions to the Police Department budget. Section four, upon approval of the job description and salary range, the positions will be advertised as per normal procedure.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there a discussion?
I just want to commend Judge Brown and Pastor Crumpton and staff, job well done, and keep up the good work.
Councilman Mays, did you have a comment or question?
I would, yes, I would, thank you. I would say Pastor Crumpton is doing a great job. Y'all always have, I had, and, uh, we need to give him the green light. That mean, that mean, that mean well. I've never known our, our juveniles, we're missing something, it's like they're coming up, and I think it's in the home. And we gotta make these things right and commit, from the court to the house. Hey, y'all have a good day, and I'll sort of...
Thank you so much. Oh, council...
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Brunson? Oh, no, is this, council, oh, Councilmember Frazier?
When we, when we were in committee with this, and I just want to make sure, cause on here, um, again, I have nothing, I want GBI to work, and I agree, we need to help, help make it, uh, work for our city, uh, and give it a green light with everything decent and in order. Um, I just want to make sure, because we agreed in the committee meeting that the salaries would be the one twenty-seven five oh three, but I see here that now, and here it says thirty thousand to fifty thousand, but when we calculated that hundred and twenty-seven five oh three, we based it off of the entry, uh, salary range, so is it going to be the entry salary range, or is it going to be up to fifty thousand? I need, I, I just want to make sure we have this language right.
I, I would say that that range is there because you probably have the minimum and the maximum in that just for future, uh, just in case an individual's here for longer than ten years, or fifteen years, or twenty years, then you have the range for those positions in there already. But, um, you know, a position coming into the door, they're gonna start off with that, that base salary.
Okay, because the range for them are, the range, the highest range for the credible man, messenger is fifty-five oh fifty-four, and then the highest range for the, uh, case manager is sixty-eight thousand one hundred, so I'm just trying to, y'all, I promise y'all, I am for GBI, I just want to make sure that we have everything decent and in order. So with that being said, up here with that range, but then on the job description, it says something totally different, and then we're saying we're gonna start with the one twenty-seven five oh three, I think it can be a little confusion, a, a little confusing.
Uh, according to the salary.
That's all I have to say.
Well, I, I think that anytime you have a position, you have to have a range, because, you know, we have that salary survey that's in place, and so, uh, based off of years of service, that salary will change, and so, um, I believe that's why they have a range there, but that's not saying that that's what that position would be, because it would be a new position, which means they would start off at that base salary.
Right, I understand the range, and, and I think y'all just not hearing where I'm coming from.
Councilmember Frazier?
I understand the range, I'm just saying the range is different from what we have on the job descriptions.
Councilwoman Frazier, hold on just a second, um, this, Madam City Attorney, I believe...
Yes, yes, ma'am. It will not exceed, um, it will, it cannot exceed the one twenty-seven five zero three, it won't exceed that. If it does exceed, uh, if, if the salaries are, are implemented, before it exceeds that amount, it'll have to come back to the council.
Okay, okay, thank you. Can I say this?
Hold on just a second, Councilman Mays, uh, Councilman Holcomb had a comment. Okay, go ahead, Councilman Mays. Councilman Mays, go ahead, please. Councilmember Mays?
Sounds like he's talking, but he may be...
Yeah, you may not, we can't hear you. Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Holcomb.
Just, uh, one thing, uh, we all agreed that the, the Administration Committee meeting that we, we sponsored, and, uh, Councilmember Lockett's name is not on here, is all I, all I wanted to say.
There was?
As a sponsor.
Councilmember Lockett?
Yes, uh, Councilmember Fales wanted to be added as a sponsor, so...
Any further discussion?
No, ma'am.
Okay, before we take a vote, um, I just also wanted to, uh, commend GBI, um, and everyone who has had anything to do with it. I want to especially recognize, um, Judge Brown, uh, this, this aspect of, uh, government in terms of, um, the, you know, executive and implementation level is not even a part of the level of government that you work in, diligence, so diligently every day, and, um, you know, you, I think, took a big leap and not only, uh, established this city as one that would, um, operate outside of what we've always done, so that we, we wouldn't get what we always got. Um, you found the funding, you found volunteers, you found partners, um, and I remember when you did it, and I just want to thank you for your commitment and your diligence to this city, to young people, and helping us attack the crime that has pervaded for so long in a way where we could see measurable results, that we're still seeing measurable results. I also want to thank, in his absence, um, Sheriff Lafayette Woods, who has been also an incredible partner in this, and of course, Reverend Crumpton, um, thank you. I've had an opportunity to attend, um, two, um, uh, site visits, and so with this, uh, and what the City Council is doing, um, together, it will continue to make a huge difference, because I've seen up close and personally how, when the program is fully supported and fully funded, what it can do, um, in the communities that I, I was able to witness, and so I especially also want to thank you, Councilman Lockett, and all of you, um, council members, uh, for making a difference in this city. Uh, with that...
My, uh, sorry, may I, um, flowers?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Oh, okay, okay. Um, I don't know, they had put my name on there, did you say that earlier, uh, Holcomb? I don't know, or a sponsor?
Let's make sure.
I'm sorry.
No, don't apologize, we want to make sure. Is it on there, Madam Clerk?
It is.
Yes, so everybody's on there, this is, this is, this is a collaborative effort, yes. Yes, Councilman Mays, yes, Councilman Mays.
To, have, have you...
You're already on there, sir, we got you covered.
And I really support, I was at juvenile, working with juvenile court when they started that.
Yes, sir.
Pastor Crumpton, and it's a good program, we just gotta stay with it.
We are about to stay with it, because we are about to take a vote. Can we do that? Yes, sir.
Let me finish, let me finish. But the thing about, stick with it and make sure that it's gonna be, we can't keep it working. Those, those, those youth up there, those young people, a lot of them are really confused. And Pastor Crump doesn't, Crumpton, Reverend, Pastor Crumpton does a great job working with them, and we just can't vote on this and leaving them behind. They need a full and total support every day, every week, every night, every day, every year.
Amen.
Amen, thank you so much, Councilman Mays.
I think we've been doing that.
And...
But, but just it's...
Okay, Councilman, ca, uh, well, I'm gonna go ahead and call the vote, let's go ahead and do this, because we are all excited, I think we're all excited and all supportive. So it's been moved and seconded, all those vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? I am happy to say that this vote has passed unanimously.
Agenda item number eight, a resolution providing for an audit of the financial affairs of the Street Department for the calendar years of twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-four.
Whereas there are questions concerning the management of financial affairs by the Street Department, which can only be addressed by an audit of the receipts and expenditures of the department, and whereas the audit should be over a period of four years to ensure it is thorough, and whereas the audit should be performed by a qualified forensic accounting firm or accountant retained by the city. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one, that the mayor is authorized via the city's professional services procurement rules to engage a forensic accounting firm or accountant to perform an audit of the financial affairs of the Street Department covering the years twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-four. The engagement of the auditor should be undertaken and completed within a reasonable time. Section two, that the audit report should be submitted to the mayor and provided to each member of the City Council. Section three, that the Finance Director and the Street Department Manager will cooperate fully with the auditor as requested.
Move for adoption?
Second.
Um, discussion?
I have, I have a question, a few, a couple of questions. Um, one, I want to know if, what prompted this, uh, this audit? Two, um, I thought that if you were looking to do a financial audit of the whole city versus just one department. Three, uh, because we have the ordinance that's get ready, come down the pipeline, uh, where is the funds gonna come for, from, to pay for the audit, and do you have a general idea how much the audit is gonna be?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm getting with the mayor, my, our mayor, on these funds, matter of fact, I'm, I'm gonna reduce it down, uh, just for the last two years, not for one year.
If I could, if, Councilman Mays, if I could interject, um, since you, you mentioned that you were gonna get with me and, and the question about funding, um, if I could ask you, uh, to pull this resolution, and if we could work together, because we are actually in the process of putting together the language for an RFP or an RFQ, uh, so that we can get a sense of what the, will not just get a sense, so we can know what the cost will be, and just like with other measures or other contracts like this, we go through that RFP or RFQ process first, so that we can identify, uh, qualified, uh, consultants or qualified contractors to do the work. We, we will know from that process what the cost will be, and then we will be able to very accurately, um, uh, share with the council, uh, what that cost is, and, um, and where the money will come from. And I would add, too, that, um, this needs to be something, uh, where we are conducting the audit across the city's finances, and I think that, um, if you will please pull it down and, and work with us, we can share with you the language that we've already found in order to, um, uh, ask the Finance, uh, Department to advertise the, um, request for a proposal and, um, and move on from there. And I think that what you're trying to do would be covered in a, in a broader effort across the city's finances. Can we do that?
Well...
Please?
Let me say this, let me say this. We need this done.
We're, it's, I'm telling you, I'm telling you, it's, it's, we are in the process so that it can get done as soon as possible, we just want it done right, um, and we want it done in a, broadly, and, and honestly done in a way where we're not, um, trying to, um, indicate what has or hasn't been done when we don't know yet, that's the purpose for the audit, it, the forensic audit is so we can know, you know, what we can do better, what may have been done incorrectly, uh, so that we can correct ourselves, um, so that, that's the purpose, and if you would please, uh, work with the mayor's office, we can expand this, and, and I would, um, ask you to begin the process of, um, sponsorship as well.
I, I really, I, I'm all right, just taking it just like it is, our street department people are real lazy.
Um, Mr., Ca, Councilman, Councilman...
The streets, the streets look real, they look terrible. They look, the street, our streets are terrible, and I get calls all the time. You see the street department workers out there, uh, sitting around, most of them don't even show up, they be somewhere else, out of the city.
Councilmember Mays?
Councilmember Mays, I, I promise you, from my visit, uh, to that department twice, the hiring of a new, um... hiring of a new department director, who in his first week dealt with a snowstorm and our streets were clean as a whistle, including our identification of the remaining ARPA funds that we intend to spend to address the potholes. They are working, we are working. And, and I'll tell you this, I know that we all have frustrations and we hear from citizens every day, but our workers across the city are not in the work of public service for the money. I promise you that. And I just don't think it's a good idea for us to cast a broad net across a whole department of people who come to work every day and help make, you know, the city work, to call them names. And, and, and I know that you're frustrated because I know you call and you respond to your constituents regularly. They call us, they call the directors, and we all work hard to get it done. But I'd want to set a new standard in terms of how we discuss these matters so that we're not calling names of anybody. If somebody needs to be held accountable, they will be held accountable. People fire themselves when they don't do their job or when they do something wrong. And I think that's how we ought to approach it. And I'm just respectfully asking that we move forward in that way and that you will please consider working with the mayor's office, no matter what happens with the vote on this.
Well, you finish, Mayor. But, but I appreciate your support.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not supporting this. I'm just saying that no matter what happens with the vote on this, I'm asking that we can work together for a broad resolution. And, you know, it is perfectly within your right and authority to present this. And as sponsor, I want to ask you to make whatever remarks or ask whatever questions or discussions so that the rest of the council can vote on it. And, go ahead.
I, I work for the citizens and they tell me all the time, I'm riding on these roads. And I know we got a street department with a budget. And, and these streets are terrible.
Councilman Mays.
Now, now, let, let me finish, let me finish. Tiger is doing a great job, but he jumped into something that he didn't know all the background on. This, this is pitiful, the way our streets look out there. And my mother and grandmother and kids, everybody, I hear it all the time, but I know, I see. Y'all cannot put this on the back burner. I won't let y'all vote it, vote it up or down. I'm gonna bring it back.
Councilman Mays.
You can vote, vote, I want you people to see what y'all doing, you can vote it up or down.
Yes, sir.
We're going back into this thing.
Okay.
This is a pitiful.
Let's, let's go ahead and flesh out the discussion on this. Councilmember Brown?
Uh, Councilmember Mays, the mayor just stated that she's looking to do an, an audit of all the city departments, so that would include the Street Department. If you will allow her the time to get the language together, you know, we'll have legislation and a, and a generalized, or I would say more specific cost on that audit, you know, to pass this one and then turn around and have to do RS, RFQ on this and then turn around and do an RFQ on the whole city, you know, it will be a waste of the city's resources. And so why don't we just allow the mayor to finish the language for the legislation that she wants to present to the council, which will include the Street Department? And that way we can get a, a better idea of what's going on in these departments.
Once again, Tiger is doing a great job with it as. He inherited this mess. And he needs some help.
Well, Councilmember Mays, we're not, we're not disagreeing with you. We're just saying that if we pass this, then it's, it's basically, we're, we're doing it twice because when the mayor comes back with the, with the legislation for the entire city audit, then this is going to be in there anyway. So it, it would be, we're like, we're doing it twice. So if we can hope...
My focus, my focus is the Street Department right now. Y'all can do everything else. This is my focus.
Yes, sir. But the Street Department is going to be included in the citywide budget, in the citywide audit.
Uh, Councilman Lockett?
Madam Mayor, I, I agree that we may need to look into the finance of the Street Department, but I too agree that it should be done comprehensively. So I'd like to make a motion to table this and merge it into a more fuller, broader, comprehensive audit.
Second.
Second.
It's been, it's been, a motion has been made and seconded to table this resolution until such time as we can expand it to a broader resolution addressing the finances of the city. All those indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We don't have to have a vote.
Roll call?
Yeah, roll call.
Okay.
Oh, we'll call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Just, so what we...
Councilmember Mays?
It's, it is, it's a, a motion to table and it's not debatable. Council, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Mays?
On this, I'm going to vote no.
Yes, sir. Just a second. If the roll, the roll is being called, go ahead.
Councilmember Hockem?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett?
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier?
Aye.
Councilmember Brunson?
Aye.
Councilmember Fields?
Aye.
Councilmember Denton?
Aye.
He's, he voted no. No, okay. All right. The motion to table passes. Thank you.
Okay. Item item number nine. A resolution urging the mayor to appoint new members to the ZIP code study committee created in Resolution Number 3984 concerning the effects of shared 71602 ZIP code within the city of Whitehall, Arkansas.
Whereas Pine Bluff and Whitehall share United States post the ZIP code 71602. And whereas, this has resulted in confusion and raises concerns that the city has been negatively impacted. And whereas, the City Council in Resolution, Resolution 3984 passed March 6, 2017, created a ZIP code study committee of three persons to examine the impact of the shared ZIP code has on the city. And whereas, the committee has not met, two of its three appointees being deceased, and the mayor should appoint a fresh group of three persons to undertake the study and make a report. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the mayor is urged to appoint three new members of the ZIP code study committee to study the effects of the shared ZIP code 71602 with the city of Whitehall with new, with the new appointees to submit a report on their findings and conclusions as soon as possible.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I, I thought that we... Go ahead. Um, I, I thought that we did, I, I know this, it says that the resolution was passed in March 2017, but I thought that the committee did meet because I, I remember a young lady coming to me and talking about how working with Alderman Mays in regards to this. So was there not a, and, and I'm just asking because I don't, I don't know. Was there not a resolution done in regards to this ordinance that was passed in 2017?
Yeah, thank you. I will trade, you, you're right. Uh, you know, since then, we had the COVID and some of the members got sick. And I just need a few more members on there, that's all.
Yeah, if I could clarify, Councilman Mays, it, the, the resolution asked for me to appoint new members since two of the members were deceased. It sounds like the report was never done. So I'm supportive of this. And if there is no more discussion, we can call the vote. It's been moved and seconded. All those indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item item number 10. Item item number 10. A resolution directing that the municipal government take steps to verify and demarcate the boundaries of the city.
Whereas, it assists businesses as well as current and potential residents of the city to have a firm grasp of the brown, boundaries of the municipality for planning and other purposes. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the mayor should take the necessary steps to verify the current boundaries of the city of Pine Bluff and demarcate same by appropriate markings or signage.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Uh, yes.
Uh, Councilmember, uh, Member Brown?
Okay. Did you ever get in touch with him?
With Larry Reynolds? Larry, I don't know if he got in touch with me.
We're gonna have Mr. Matthews come up, give a little bit of background on this.
Thank you.
Mayor, I believe this task was done in the past. I did not read the resolution to get confirmation from Larry Reynolds that those boundaries were established, but I do believe it was done in the past when the 71602 came up establishing city limits, those boundaries. Uh, I just need to verify and double check with him that those verifications were done.
So something was done in the past?
Larry?
Yes, sir.
How you doing?
I'm, I'm well, Alderman Mays.
Yeah, we, the thing about it is, the boundaries are already set, but if you look at, if you look at the markings, they're rusted, they're falling down and everything. The boundaries need to be reestablished. That's why I wrote this.
Are you talking about the, are you talking about the signage for the boundaries or the boundaries themselves?
The signs for the boundaries, the boundary lines of the city of Pine Bluff need to be, they're rusted and they're falling over and they're old. I never seen boundaries, boundaries markers like that. So I know our boundary lines are wrong and we need to reestablish our boundary lines.
I think he's referring to the signage.
Get a grip on city of mine.
Let's, hold on, let's clarify something because you were saying this was about the signs and then just now you said that the boundaries need to be reestablished as if maybe there have been some changes. Can, let me suggest this because you are, Mr. Matthews, suggesting that the boundaries may have already been reestablished.
I, I, I'm saying this particular task of establishing the boundaries have already been done. I think Alderman Mays is saying the signage needs to be redid. And that's my understanding I'm having.
Um, so, Councilman...
Motion to table, please.
Oh, yeah, okay. So it's been, um, the motion has been made and seconded to table this matter until such time as we've heard back from Mr. Reynolds regarding, uh-huh, regarding the establishment of boundaries for the city. And that is not debatable, so I'll go ahead and call the questions. All those indicate by saying aye.
I don't know, Mr. Reynolds, oh, Mr. Reynolds, I want it done, nothing else.
All those indicate by saying nay?
Do your, uh, roll call, ma'am.
Oh, I'm so sorry. That's right. This requires a roll call. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on this vote?
Please reiterate what we're voting on, please.
So what you're voting on is to table this resolution until we hear back from Mr. Reynolds. And I did hear Councilman Mays say that he would like to hear from someone else. And we can hear from someone else just by the third. We need to get confirmation on the demarcation of the boundaries of the city so people can know what they're voting on. And so right now, we're voting to table this until the next meeting.
Okay, thanks, ma'am.
Sure.
Councilmember Mays? Councilmember Hockem?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett?
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier?
Aye.
Councilmember Brighton?
Aye.
Councilmember Denton?
Aye.
Councilmember Fields?
Aye.
Uh, the motion passes.
Item item number 11. A resolution authorizing a contract with 1911 Construction Company Incorporated for work on the Grant Street multi-trail project, trail project, excuse me.
Whereas, after advertising for interested vendors to submit bids for needed construction work on the Grant Street multi-trail project, the firm of 1911 Construction Company Incorporated submitted the only bid. And whereas, the bid submitted is consistent with the required specifications, the amount of the bid, the amount, the bid amount is reasonable and the firm is capable of performing the work. And now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the bid in the amount of $426,693.64 submitted by 1911 Construction Company Incorporated to perform work relating to the Grant Street multi-trail project is accepted. The mayor is authorized and directed to execute a contract with the firm in this amount for the work and contract to be consistent with the bid specifications and firm's bid submission. The monies to fund the contract have been budgeted.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Councilmember Lockett?
Can we get Mr. Matthews to kind of update the council on this project? It's been on, on the books for a long time, but just wanted him to give us an update on once we approve this, where we'll go forward.
Yes, this is an old project that has been on our purview for a while. We received a grant from Arkansas Department of Transportation in 2019 in the amount of To do this project, this was prior to COVID. We went through the process, got the design, COVID hit, pushed us back with our scheduling. The grant is going for the multi-trail project on Grant Street between 6th and 13th Street, which connect two corridors together for, so the kids will not have to walk into the street. We took bids in September of last year for the entire project. The entire project came in at $1.1 million to do the entire project. We also had a deductive alternate in the bid that will allow us to do it in phases. The first phase came in at the $426,000. We have $341,000 of that 385 that will go towards the project, that is the 80% that the Highway Department will pay. The city is obligated to pay the 20% that is left, is about $85,000, which was already approved by the city when we went for the grant. So we are asking the council to approve the first phase. We will be applying to Arkansas Department of Transportation for the second phase this year and upcoming so that we can complete the project. We've had much success with them with doing these projects, first phase and second phase. The weather's changing, we'd like to get this project in as, as soon as possible. And this came from the residency, from the West Side, to do this project.
The fourth ward, residents.
Yes.
Mr. Matthews, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, that's where we're at at the point. Now, I neglected to get this to the council in December, we had a lot of things going, so we're bringing it back now. We, we got highway approval, we dealt with energy on relocation, we bought right away properties all along the project, so we're ready to proceed on with the project.
So this is, so you're saying this is the same $385,000 that we approved for already, we're just now we're using it?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
We'll, we'll apply that. We can only use 80% of what the bid price is. We got a maximum of 385. But the bid came in at 426, we can only use $341,000 of the 385. The state will pay for 80% and the city is obligated to pay the other 20%. Yes.
Any further discussion?
I just want to be added, please.
I have something right here, two on this here. Can I speak?
Yes, please.
Mr. Matthews?
Sir?
Okay. The first number you have is $426,293.64.
That is the contract price.
It's 428?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, wait, hold on just a second. Repeat yourself, Mr. Matthews, when you responded to that first figure.
Okay, the first figure is the contract price. I think it was the $426,600, I believe, that is in the resolution. That is the contract price to do the job.
Did you hear that, Councilman Mays?
Yes, what's the 428,000 for?
Um, I'm not sure what that figure...
He's looking at the bid tabulation, Larry Matthews. He's looking at the bid tabulation and so that's a tabulation, that's not the actual awarded contract.
Yes, I know.
Well, I think 426,693 is the, is the first one, but the second one is a little higher.
Saying, let's see, 420, he said 426, Councilman Mays?
Yeah, that's the last one, but the middle one is 428.
And I'm not...
I'm just looking at, this is on page four back here, it's a total base bid list, deductive, four tap, four hundred twenty-six thousand, six hundred ninety-three, sixty-four.
That is the number, that is the contract amount there. That's the deductive alternate that we're taking.
Did you hear that, Councilmember Mays?
Yes, we got it.
Okay, all right. Oh, did you have anything further? All right. Any further discussion? The motion has been made and seconded. All those indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass.
Agenda items number twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, a resolution appointing Dr. Clarence Holman, Jimmy Stocker, Alita Shaka Bowler, Fred Woods, Kenneth Cole to the Veterans Internment Committee for Graceland Bellwood Cemetery.
Whereas there exists a vacancy on the Veteran Internment Committee established to administer the Veterans Section res- reserved in the Graceland Bellwood Cemetery. Where, and whereas pursuant to section eight dash forty-two of the Code Of Portances of, uh, the mayor has appointed Dr. Clarence Holman, Jimmy Stocker, Alita Bowler, Fred Woods, and Kenneth Cole to the vacancies subject to council approval. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the mayor's appointments of Dr. Clarence Holman, Jimmy Stocker, Alita Bowler, Fred Woods, and Kenneth Cole to the Veterans Internment Committee for the Graceland Bellwood Cemetery to serve a term all to expire January thirty-one, twenty-twenty-eight is hereby approved and confirmed.
Move for adoption?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Uh, yes. May I speak, Mayor?
Yes, please.
I would, I would highly recommend Kenneth Cole. With lead on this. He, he's a, he's a veteran for, I said, thirty years. He's, he's a good guy. He's, he's, uh, he'll make the big difference with this. If we're gonna make it work.
Well, he is, he is definitely an appointee, and I believe it's been moved and seconded. If there's no further discussion, if you're fine with that, uh, Councilmember Mays, we're gonna go ahead and take the vote in support of Mr. Cole and the other num, uh, uh, the other appointees.
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you so much. It's been moved and seconded. All those indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass. Movements passed.
I move, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Oh, before we adjourn, I have, uh, two announcements. Just a moment, I'm gonna read real fast. The first announcement, the city of Pine Bluff has opened a temporary emergency warming center. Uh, it started last night. In partnership with DuPaul USA, the city's warming center is stationed at the Opportunity House Old First Ward School located at thirteen oh five East Sixth Avenue. It opened Monday, February seventeen, twenty-twenty-five. The center will operate from three P.M. to seven A.M. until Saturday morning, February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five. This is a heated, secure indoor environment. Please contact the Opportunity House at eight seven zero five six nine thirty-one thirty for donations and for more information. The second announcement, save the date. March twentieth, twenty-twenty-five, Graceland Cemetery will host a special event to honor the families we have served. The Remembrance Day will honor the families and express our gratitude for choosing Graceland as their family member's final resting place. Contact the cemetery at eight seven oh five four three five one three seven for more information. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor?
Oh, yes.
Just wanted to confirm, make sure everybody got the email. We're dressing up at our next meeting for the group photo.
Thank you, yes. Uh, we will be dressing up at our next meeting for our group photo, so everybody do your best to look real good.
Black tie?
A notice will be sent prior to.
A notice will be sent prior to from Madam Clerk.
Do we need to stick with the same color scheme or?
Yes, sir, it's listed in your announcement.
Is it in there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Dark suits?
Yeah.
Have a good evening, you all.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, with no objection, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you so much, all goodbyes.
Oh, you gonna wear your purple? You can't wear your purple tonight. You got on more than the mayor. Oh, my God.
It's seven o'clock.
I know, we could have been out of here.
What's going on, dude?
What is he trying to do with his face?
He supposed to be gone, man.
Okay.
Is it snowing out there yet?
Oh, are they?
All right, babe.
Here in Pine Bluff?
Pine Bluff? Really? Oh, so it's already, I thought it hadn't done anything yet.
All right, let's go.
I was thinking, we were, I was looking at the weather, it wasn't showing any precipitation on the, uh, on the app.
You know what? I can take everything except calling people names. I do not like that, and I'm. I was nice about it, but we're not.